Nancy, could you read our mission and belief statement, please?
Yes, our mission statement. In a caring, concerned community, we prepare all students with the skills to reach fulfillment and excel as productive members of a never-changing world. And our belief statement is, we believe working together with students, families, and the community, the school is accountable for student achievement. We believe success is achieved when students become lifelong nurses and responsible citizens. We believe all students will learn. We believe in all individuals treating each other with dignity and respect. And we believe in the continuous improvement of our school district.
Thank you. Dr. Bishop, any additions to the agenda?
I have no additions to the agenda.
Approval of the agenda?
No.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the cash flow?
Recommendation of the superintendent that we approve our cash flow report as follows. Current cash balance of one million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, thirty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Investment accounts of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-four cents. Anticipated cash revenues of two hundred and ninety thousand, even. Estimated total available, two million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one and sixty-one cents. And our projected ending cash balance, two million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and forty-four, fifty-two.
Is there a motion to accept the cash flow report?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Presentations, the drama club.
It's a recommendation of the superintendent that we enjoy a presentation from our drama club. So, okay, just wanted to make sure I knew all of who was here. Mr. Fertier, I have you step forward. I don't know if the guys and the gal- if you guys have picked who's going first.
The gentlemen are going first.
Okay. Gentlemen, when you come forward, you'd say your name first, and then you could take it away. Before the- before our ladies go, I want to make sure that the board knows, the topics that they're presenting, about two minutes and about five minutes, somewhere around there, the boys have a very lighthearted piece. The girls, prepare yourself for not so lighthearted, okay? Their topic is a deep topic that they'll be performing, and I want you to be prepared for it, because if you're not, you'll be surprised. So, I'll let you take the rest of it.
First of all, I'm so glad to see you guys all again. For some of you, I've been with you for nineteen years, and I've got to tell you, I love Harbor Beach. And I thank you for the opportunity, because you all have done a great job. And the people that you're going to see today are from our drama class. We haven't had a drama class in probably ten years. They've been working quite hard. They're going to go to a competition on the twenty-sixth against John Glenn, against four other high schools. So, they are participating in competition. This is- their part is about child abuse. It's called final placement. And one of the roles is a caseworker, dealing with an abusive mother. And the section that we picked to perform for you is the close to the end, the biggest impact of a relationship like that. And for any of you who worked with foster care before or anything like that, you'll understand the story rather quickly. The two gentlemen who are going to perform for you now, gentlemen, I have Dale Browning and Yeh Powers. And they're going to do one I think you'll be quite familiar with, at least for those of us who are older. Evan Costello, who's on first? Gentlemen, it's all yours. Thank you.
Hey Dale, send me the names of players on your baseball team, so I can say hello to them.
Sure now, who's on first, what's on second, and I don't know, play third?
Wait a minute.
What's the matter?
I said, names of players.
And I'm telling you, who's on first, what's on second, and I don't know, play third?
Well, tell me this, what's the name of the first baseman?
No, what's the name of the second baseman?
I don't know.
He plays third.
Let's start over.
Okay, who's on first?
I'm asking you, what the name of the first baseman is?
What's the name of the second baseman?
I don't know.
He's on third.
All I'm trying to find out is the name of the first baseman.
Well, and I keep telling you, who's on first?
I'm asking you, what the name of the first baseman is?
What's the name of the second baseman?
I don't know.
He's on third.
All right, okay, so you won't tell me the name of the first baseman, then?
I keep telling you, what's the name of the second baseman?
I'm asking you, who's on second?
Who's on first?
I don't know.
He plays third.
All right, okay, let's do it this way, then. You pay the players this team, correct?
Absolutely.
So, when you give the first baseman his paycheck, who gets the money?
Every penny of it.
Who?
Naturally.
Naturally?
Of course.
So, naturally is on first?
No, who's on first?
I'm asking you, what the name of the first baseman is?
And what's the name of the second baseman?
If you say third base one more time, I swear I'll- wait a minute, you got a pitcher on this team?
Ever hear of a team without a pitcher?
All right, then, tell me the pitcher's name.
Tomorrow.
What's wrong with today?
Nothing, he's a pretty good catcher.
Who's the catcher?
No, who's the first baseman?
I'm asking you, what the name of the first baseman is?
What's the name of the second baseman?
I don't know. Third base.
Well, it's very simple.
I know it's simple. You got a pitcher tomorrow, goes the ball to today, goes the ball to who, goes the ball to, I don't know, he's on third. What's more? I don't give a darn.
What's that?
I don't give a darn.
Oh, he's a shortstop.
Chelsea, you're here.
Can you sit here today?
And Marina Sarofsky. They've been working on this for a couple of months now, and they're, as you can imagine, they're a little nervous. Ladies, thank you.
You walked a very long way on a very hot day to see me alone. I'd like to know why, what I can do to help you. But you're going to have to tell me, will you? Well, I'm sorry, I wish I had more time, but I do have this appointment. So, if you let me get my things, I'll take you.
No, but see, see, I got this real good idea. It's real good, too. See, I'm fixing to move out on old Ray. He just don't know it yet, but I am. I'm going to get me a place to live and a job, maybe, with a phone company, maybe. My girlfriend works for the phone company. Or a waitress, I could do that.
Jobs are a little hard to find these days, but that sounds, I think you'd enjoy working.
I think I would, too. My girlfriend works in a duplex, my girlfriend lives in a duplex, and her neighbors is moving, maybe, and I could move in there if they did. It's got a huge fenced-in backyard and a big side yard, and I wouldn't even let old Ray come visit, only if he ever got over doing them things.
Wait a minute.
I know he don't mean to, he just loses his temper sometimes, is all. He's been getting a whole lot better about it since we went to that group. I sure do appreciate you making us go to the meetings. See, we just had a lot of pressure on us, and he was probably just taking out our-
Luallan, wait a minute here.
No, no, I still wouldn't let him come and stay. Now, no matter how much he begged me or how much he yelled at me, he couldn't. A daddy don't need to be with the son like a mama does. A mama needs to be with her child. You know that, don't you? I know you do. And I'm going to get me and Jimmy a place to live, and you can-
You know that.
And you could come visit him every day, and you could take him out in your car, and you could buy him a Coke and ask him questions. And I'd cheer him with you, we could cheer him.
Luallan, please don't do this to yourself.
I ain't.
You're hurting yourself for this. You're building up a fantasy that-
It ain't a fantasy, I thought it all out.
Thinking it out doesn't mean it can happen that way.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry.
You ain't sorry.
Yes, I am. I'm sorry for how you feel right now. I know how very-
You know what? You know what it's like to have your kid still by the welfare? To sit and remember that your little boy ain't being quiet because he's sleeping or because he into something? But he's not even there, and he's being quiet because you don't know where he is or when he's coming back. You don't know.
No, I guess, no one can really, but you have to.
What? I have to what? Forget about him? You don't got a kid, do you?
No.
You know, you want one?
Someday.
Like my Jimmy? I know you like him a whole lot. He your favorite? You know what Ray told me once and after you come to visit? He said, "You better watch out, Lou girl. That woman wants your baby for herself, and she's a going to get him, too." I didn't believe him. Sometimes, though, that Ray knows what he's talking about. You got him?
What?
You got him at your house, ain't you?
No, that's-
You don't want me to know where you live, because-
This is a state agency, there are rules here, Luallan. If I've wanted to do something like-
Oh, you want to, you want to, and you did.
I don't remember. You have another light? No matter how much I care about Jimmy, and I do, I care about him, that simply isn't the reason he was taken out of your home. You know that. He's not at my house, okay? Now, I want you to tell me precisely what it is you think I can do. That way, I can answer you most clear as way as possible, so we understand each other.
I want to see Jimmy.
I understand that, but what do you want me to do?
I want you to go get him and bring him here.
I can't do that, I don't have the authority. It's out of my hands.
You go get him and bring him here.
I can't.
Yes, you can. Get him.
You were in the courtroom, you heard what the judge said.
Then call him.
Who?
Call that judge right now and tell him I can have my baby back.
I'm not going to argue with you.
Call him.
This interview has ended.
Call him.
I can't call the judge.
Yes, you can, and you better.
Luallan?
I mean it.
Now, stop this.
I'll hurt you, I'll do something.
Just who do you think you are? What do you think you're doing here? There's- you can't ever, not ever in your life, see that child again, not ever.
Yes, I can.
No, do you think the state or the judge would put that little boy back after what you did?
I didn't, I never done. Ray, Ray done it.
Ray may have done a lot of it, but not that last, Luallan.
Ray.
You, you, you admitted it to me, to the judge.
I- I never done it, Ray done it.
Ray may have done a lot of it, but not that last.
Well, he made me.
He made you hold that child's hand to a hot stove till you had first and second degree burns?
We was just teaching him.
I was telling you one thing, Ray couldn't have made me do that. And in all those months we had him in foster care, you haven't contacted me once, not one time to see how he was doing. So, why today? Why do people suddenly turn up out of the blue and think? We explained everything to you six months ago. You could hold a gun to my head and a knife to my throat, and I wouldn't get him back for you.
What am I going to do?
I don't know, see someone, let me make an appointment.
Talking to a stranger ain't going to help.
It can.
I was right by you one, Jimmy, wasn't I? I know I was. That's how come me to come to see you. It gets so quiet sometimes, I thought you'd understand. Ray told me, he said, "The welfare don't care about nobody's feelings. They ain't never going to help you." My girlfriend's fixing to have a baby. I've been giving her all Jimmy's baby things.
I know that, I'm sure that's very hard.
It is. And I'm going to give her a baby shower at my house, too.
Nancy, sorry.
Thank you very much. Thanks for taking- having the courage, both groups, for coming before us and presenting, showing us a little bit about what you've done in class and kind of how you progressed. I'm very honored to be able to have you come and just give us that little bit of glimpse. I know there's a section of a much bigger thing. Welcome to the board, if they have any- if they have any questions or any comment?
When is the competition?
On the twenty-sixth, Saturday at John Glenn High School.
Of January?
Yes, January.
Oh, excellent.
How many more people participate in here?
We have three others in the class, and what we have is the girls do one of the scene, they've actually doubled the scene. So, when we do a performance here, which will be like the first week in February, on Friday will be the ladies, and on Saturday will be the other two ladies. And then we have one other gal who has do all the technical things for us.
How long do you have to rehearse?
We've been rehearsing probably once- once a day for probably the last six or seven weeks.
Wow.
So, which is normal, most productions generally take you about six to eight weeks, so it's been somewhat condensed.
Yeah, that's great. And I want to again say, thank you very much. You don't have to stay for the rest of the board meeting. You can leave, you won't be offending anyone, okay? But thank you again for coming out and sharing with us.
And thank you.
Thank you.
The SWAT team presentation.
In front of you, you have, well, it's a document that has the female fired on the edge. The SWAT team is, that's, the acronym is for the Schoolwide Advancement Team, which is kind of the replacement of what would have been strategic planning and district improvement and kind of that culmination altogether. And I wanted to take just a second and catch you up on some of the things that have been happening with that team recently. Just some, I'll show you a couple of things I've been working on up here. And just highlight, and originally, we had talked about having, you know, various members of SWAT team here, but the way that today unfolded, it seemed like I could do the presentation just as well with us and I have your school today, so. Share what this document is in a second, but one of the things that I wanted to share with you is, we've got a pretty large, a pretty good-sized team going together. Right here, you can see the members of our team. We've met three or four times already as part of that SWAT team. And what we've been doing is, we went through first, and we determined meeting dates and roles from here throughout the day, all the way till June. So, we have all of our meeting dates set from here through June, and talked about roles. So, we have like a timekeeper, a note taker, et cetera. We've talked about how we're going to communicate with the board, how we're going to communicate with staff, and how we're going to get out, and to what degree we're going to have different groups involved in actual hands-on sort of way. As part of that, the SWAT team is meeting, has made the decision that we'll be meeting monthly, and we'll report out to the board quarterly, including a workshop sort of setting in August for the board where we'll get a little bit more hands-on, okay? So, that's kind of the scope of the timing. At least quarterly reports back out to the board from the SWAT team members while the members are meeting every month. And then at least one time a year where we're getting a little bit more hands-on, talking about, do we still believe in our mission, vision, goals, et cetera? And do that in a meeting like this, and make sure everybody has some kind of tie into what our strategic planning is. Meeting, I discuss that when we look down here. One of our first steps was to look at our current slash former strategic plan, which we went through in pretty good detail as the SWAT team itself, to familiarize people with what that strategic plan is or was, and started looking at whether or not we still believed in the mission, vision, and beliefs. From that conversation, from that group came, let's not get bogged down in mission, vision, and beliefs right now. Let's wait until we bring it back to the board for a larger discussion, but let's move on with some things where we feel like we can actually, you know, sink our teeth into something. So, one of the first topics that we covered as part of that was a committee audit that we went through. So, we had an assignment for all staff members to note any committees that they, as back as far as they can remember, any committees that they had been on, what, where those committees are at currently, why they were designed, et cetera, et cetera. And then that SWAT team in its maybe second or third meeting, went through those committees and talked about whether, whether their purpose was served already, whether they've been integrated into another committee, just like, basically, let's do a self-audit about where we are at with various committees, what should go on next with those committees, or should they be terminated? Just make some decisions. From that, we had talked about this concept, and it kind of came up organically from that, that the SWAT team would be one of the leadership sort of committees, if you will, the leadership team, reporting back out to the board quarterly, and having the board get really messy with the strategic planning at least once a year. That team meeting monthly. Also, from that team would be spin-off committees as needed, sort of ad hoc committees, if you will, or whatever. Those could be any things from buildings and grounds to athletics to whatever, just as they come up that they're needed, that those committees would spin off from the SWAT team and report back to the SWAT team. Those, we had a good discussion at that, first or second meeting, whatever the one with this was. We had a good discussion about, trying to be clear about some committees are not meant to be ongoing committees, and trying to be clear about that at the beginning, that sometimes you have topic-oriented committees. And sometimes, when we looked back at the audit, one of the things that we found was sometimes that wasn't defined going in. So, people felt like, you know, we haven't met with this committee in forever. But maybe if it would have been clearer at the beginning that the committee wasn't designed to meet forever, was going to handle a particular topic, it would have been a little bit easier and probably less sort of sideways understandings afterwards. That's one of the pieces that we had, that we've been working on. One of the other things that we worked on was, was this, which would be, this had actually quite a bit of discussion, even though it looks semi-complicated, maybe not overly complicated. One of the first things that we talked about was, as a district, we do not, trying to make sure we had an understanding about what we're doing for assessments across the district. Because, and it came out in multiple ways, one of, one of those was, what data's, what data are we using, presenting back to the board, teachers presenting to teachers, presenting at PLC, et cetera, et cetera. What data are we presenting, what, and how are we presenting it? And from that came a discussion, do we even, have we done a self-audit on, what data are we collecting? And that's where the assessment audit came in. We went back to start talking about, okay, if we, if we are missing data, or we, or aren't we missing data, we got to look at what we are, how we're assessing kids. And that, and this is a summary document that actually had hours' worth of conversation, Aaron was part of that meeting, hours' worth of conversation behind it. But in this document, what we're trying to show is, what we currently do as screening mechanisms and as summative or end-of-the-year sort of assessments from every grade level, and trying to make sure there's awareness, we have, on our committee, we have people from all different grade levels. This was eye-opening, I think, for everyone, from kindergarten representations to people who were there from high school, and I'll run through it kind of quickly with you, but I've, you know, we certainly can review it in more depth later, but I don't want to get bogged down too much in just this one article. But just as an example, the things that we do that are summative assessments in math, reading, science, and social studies, and what we do in screening. So, mostly, our screeners are things that are done multiple times a year. They're supposed to be quickly given to kids to get data back quickly. And as you can see, in math, in math, we do a math DIBELS and an NWA DIBELS from kindergarten through fifth grade. And then it starts to change just a little bit, that column got cut off a little bit. We do do NWA, it just got cut off there in that column, but sixth and seventh grade, and we do a different sort of DIBELS testing, math DIBELS testing. You may have heard of DIBELS before in the reading, but they also do a math version of the DIBELS. So, all kids go through these assessments approximately three times a year. M-Step, which years ago was called MEET, you know, and it's morphed around, but M-Step is given one time a year in the spring. M-Step is given to these grade levels, as you can see, third grade through seventh grade. And this next year will be switching to PSAT, which is maybe new to some of you, and definitely new to some of, to some of us. So, the M-Step, this will be the first year that is a pre-SAT, is what will be used by the state. So, there's a PSAT eight and nine that will be given, so eighth and ninth graders will be given that. And then you see PSAT come up again in tenth grade, and then, of course, the regular SAT coming up in eleventh grade, which is where it's, where it has some real teeth. Also, M-Step comes back in again because the SAT doesn't cover all subject matter. So, M-Step comes in to fill in the subject matter that's not covered. Very similar in reading. When you lay it out like this, you can see gaps that the state has very obviously in science. You can see it only comes up three times, so about every three years here. You've gaps that come up in social studies. And for us, this is also an awareness about where our gaps are. We don't, there is, there isn't an NWA social studies. NWA stopping at the end of eighth grade for, for science. When you look at it put like this, our next step as a committee is to say, okay, should we be filling these gaps in with something? Or is this enough information for us? But at what point are kids on test overload? And maybe that value from the data that we're getting back is not high? So, the, the next step, we meet again, first week of February, I think it is, and we're going to go over this in greater detail, and say, where else, what should we be doing about some of these gaps that we have? And then also, the data that we have collected through these, how are we making sure that we're sharing it out well? As a side note to this, we also had a presentation from staff members who have been trained in NWA. We had a presentation from two staff members who are trained in NWA, that took about hour, I would say. And I guarantee you, we are not, based on that presentation, we're not using NWA for all of it, what it can do. And that was eye-opening for everybody in the room, because we're paying for a product that is capable of doing more than what we're doing for it now, you're doing with it now to progress students. Anyway, that's a, some of what's happening with the SWAT team. Some of our next steps are to look deeper at the data, including some more of our survey data, which we briefly shown to different groups, but that group needs to look at it in more detail. When we did the staff survey, parent survey, and student survey last year at the end of the year, that group would be going over it in a little bit more detail. We're going to start looking at how we can braid the SWAT team in with PLCs, so that they're not doing the same work just in two different silos. We want to make sure that they're crossed with each other well. And we're going to be looking at how we can make sure we get you information and get you more hands-on. And that, on our February meeting, we want to make sure we do that. We want to make sure that board members have more direct ties into that. We're just beginning that, and we haven't had seventeen meetings ready. But while we're at the beginning stages, where we need to talk about how we can include you in a meaningful way with that. So, those are our next topics for February, probably March, too. And that's just a, hopefully, a very quick overview of SWAT team process for you.
High school enrollment is two-hundred-and-seven. That number's down one from the last meeting, but we haven't actually lost a student recently. Those numbers are only updated when we actually receive transfer papers from another school. So, we had lost a student who moved away in early fall, and that number wasn't changed until we got the record request. So, that change is, is not, not recent. Middle school numbers haven't changed. Professional development, not a whole lot lately, but Mr. Fuller did go to a multi-day conference for soccer coaches. Some points of pride to mention, Ms. Roberts received a Scholastic grant for twenty books. She's going to put those in her classroom. And Mrs. Stramsky received about a thousand dollars for her life skills class, and the space is amazing in there, the stoves and all the big equipment are great, but what she found is some of the smaller equipment, the blenders, even microwaves were outdated. So, she's going to use this money to replace some of the smaller things. Just a FAFSA update, the FAFSA is the application that students have to fill out if they're going to get any type of student aid from the government, loans, grants, and everything like that. Right now, Harbor Beach High School is sixth in the state as far as student completion for FAFSA's, and we're first in Huron County. Also, our senior class this year, forty-two students, has already submitted almost seven-hundred-and-fifty applications for scholarships. And we all know, you can't win them if you don't apply for them. So, that's, that's pretty good, right now, for that small of a class, to have seven-hundred-and-fifty applications. The last point of pride I want to mention is our, is our new Pixelot camera in the gym. If you've been in the gym, you probably saw the big camera up on the wall that is used to televise sporting events, and it's been, it's live, it's running, and it's really amazing to watch. So I, Dr. Bishop and I both used it a couple of times. Once, I was homesick with strep throat, couldn't watch the basketball game, so I just logged on and was able to see it from home. It was, it was amazing. You even got to hear the band play. Couple upcoming events, this, this list is somewhat outdated because of the snow day today. I had mentioned on there that Friday's the end of semester one, but I printed this yesterday. We're going to have to push that back a little bit because some final exams are being moved to next week. The end of the semester will actually be next Tuesday. Next Monday, our sophomores are going on a, on a field trip to Farmington Hills, to the sock, to the Holocaust memorial there. They do this at the end of the unit where they read a book called Night, which is about a Holocaust survivor, and this trip is part of that unit. And it's, it's a big week for our sophomores, because then, on Wednesday morning, they're going to spend half the day at the tech center, learning about the different programs available there, to see if they want to attend the tech center next year. And lastly, next Friday is Coming Home. We're going to have basketball.
Dr. Bishop.
I'm going to step up here and show you the Pixelot, just to give you the example of that. But as I walk up there, I'll tell you, from the elementary principal hat, enrollment remains steady for preschool through fifth grade. I might mention that our Fall Count Day is coming up. It's a February count day. I said Fall, didn't mean to, Spring Count Day is technically February count day. I want to mention Section 25, just for a section, a second. That is down just a couple of kids. What Section 25 is, is between count days, between our Fall Count Day and our Spring Count Day, which is really February, you are able to charge or claim a student who has moved in between the two dates into another district. So for example, if we have a student who comes over from North Huron, in between count days, we are able to file Section 25 and claim part of the funding for that student who comes in between count days. That, we have, if we, if I look at where we were as of yesterday, in talking with Pat Terrell, who helps, you know, keep track of that for us, our net between count days at the element, at K-12 level was down about three kids who had filed, we had filed some Section 25 with other districts, some have filed with us to claim in between for partial FTE, and we're down about three students that way. So I thought it would be worth mentioning. We have not taken part in Section 25 in the past. This is the first year that, that we sought to claim those additional funds. So I thought it was worth mentioning.
How many students do we have total?
I didn't write it down. I want to say 180. It's, it's one or two kids off of 180 if I'm wrong. What else? Coming Home, Mr. Bogart mentioned just a second ago. The week after Coming Home, depending on snow days, we'll be at the 100th Day of School, which is always a big celebration at the elementary. So I thought I'd mention that. We are literally halfway done with the school year coming next week, so we're already halfway done with another year. It's just amazing, it's flying by. And those 40-some seniors, they have no idea. I mean, it just goes by faster than you could think. Christmas Around the World was a Christmas celebration, or a holiday celebration, we had the week before Christmas at the elementary. And with about 180 students in the elementary, we had 129 students represented at the, at that evening event. So it is, this community supports their kids. I know, I, it is easy to find media representation about how parents don't support kids and about how, that doesn't happen at Harbor Beach. We had 129 out of 110 elementary kids represented at a holiday event. That's outstanding. You don't find that in a lot of places. So that's a definite point of pride. From the district level, I wanted to make sure we mentioned, Mr. Bogart mentioned that because of today's snow day, the semester end has changed to next week, Tuesday, instead of this Friday. And the exam schedule is a little convoluted, but basically, just think of everything back a day, okay? It's, it's not quite that easy because of the Holocaust thing with the sophomores, but it's kind of everything moved back a day. Teachers and bus drivers' contracts will be ending in June. We had talked a little bit about teacher contract, but ending in June and being renegotiated, but I had been remiss in not mentioning the bus driver's contract also ends in June. So in the next few months, and probably not February, but soon after that, we'll be looking at negotiating contracts for both groups. I wanted to mention to you a Special Olympics piece called Unified Program. We had a presentation, a former Harbor Beach graduate, a matter of fact, who is now Director of Special Olympics in Mount Pleasant area. Tim, his last name's not going to come to me.
H.
Heilman? Yeah, right, yes, that's it. Graduating class of like 97.
99 or so.
Or I'm sorry, 98.
Right around 98.
What was the last name?
Heilman.
Oh, oh yeah, okay.
Yep. They have a program that is called Uni, the Unified Program. If you think, at least, I'll show maybe some bias by accident, I don't know. My view of Special Olympics is students of special needs competing in athletic events, all special needs students. That's what my vision always has been, and I've even volunteered and helped many, many, many times. Mount Pleasant is a central location that a lot of times they have the Summer Games there and all of that. They use the Kelly Short Stadium at CMU to put on a lot of that. When Tim came to present to us, he presented on a different program called Unified Program, which is a blending of special ed, special needs students and Gen Ed students to play cooperative sports and celebrate in the same way that they would with an ending culminating event. So I'll give you an example. You may have a flag football team that is three special needs students and three non-special needs students, competing together with other teams from, say, Bad Ex or Ugly or whomever, Reese, doesn't matter. And, but regardless of the results of their games, they end with a culminating thing in the summertime, where they go to the Kelly Short Stadium and they get to compete. One of the ideas that we had talked about is there's a variety of sports, everything that you can imagine, from bocce ball to, to tennis to football. This past year, their football championship was at the Silverdome, for, not Silverdome, but pardon me, Ford Field. If we had played, if we had won against Breckenridge, it would have been, if my memory is correct, it would have been, the game after us would have been the unified game between the championships. All of that seems so positive as Tim talked, that we had talked about trying to field a unified team, or teams, depending on the kid's interest. And I wanted to mention it to you because we're going to try to move forward with the concept a little bit. And what we had talked about with Tim, admin team, and a bunch of our special education team, I think all of our special education teachers, not just a bunch, what we had talked about is perhaps trying to pilot a sport that we don't currently play, so it'd be interesting to both groups. And we had talked about piloting a bocce sport, where we would have one Gen Ed and one special education rep on the same team, and they would compete against other teams. And regardless of the result, everyone ends with a celebration in the summertime at, at CMU. And they're tiered, according to Tim, they're tiered. So if you get into the, like, the league and you lose every game, you still go to CMU, but you'll be playing against other teams who have poor records. And the teams who have good records will be playing other teams that have good records, because it's all about just celebrating and getting out there on a big stage and celebrating, working together. So I thought I would mention it to you because we think it's a concept worth following through, and we think it could benefit both groups of kids. And I like the concept of not saying, you know, there's one set of students and there's another set of students, instead, we're all together. Incidentally, we have a lot of our special education students already play sports. A lot of our special education students already are integrated in sports. This, that's one of the reasons we said, let's pick something a little bit unique with this and see what happens. So look for that coming up in the next, maybe not the last month, but soon after that. PLC presentation in February, I asked that group to just move their presentation from tonight to February. Buildings and grounds, I wanted to show you the Pixelot. I will do that last year. I wanted to mention the heat in the showers, in our new showers, K-8, there's still a problem with the heat in those showers, so we haven't been cleared to have kids take showers yet.
Water heater?
Yes, water heater, regular heat's ready. Not that the kids take showers anyway, unfortunately, but they couldn't technically right now because they're, we can't get hot water. Jeff's working on an answer for that. And the locks in the lockers are supposed to be tested tomorrow, and we're still missing the locks on the lockers, which is, I'm personally disappointed that we're not, we haven't gotten farther with that, but we'll continue to move forward. And Mr. Fuller wanted me to mention that the soccer scoreboard, he will be using athletic funds for the soccer scoreboard. He doesn't have a formal, a formal design to show you, but because it is on our property, he will be bringing you a formal design at some point, even though it'll be paid out in athletic funds. So I want to mention that. With the Pixelot camera, I just want to show you an example of what Aaron and I are talking about here.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
This is my account. The accounts are $10 a month, or I believe $30 a season.
$30 a season.
And then there's a yearly amount, which is not in my account.
$60 for the whole year.
Yeah, okay. The, the camera is mounted, so this is not something we could take down and move over to the soccer field, okay? They do make a more expensive version that's fairly new, that is mobile, new even since, new to us anyway, even since we installed this just a couple of months ago, or a month ago. When you log in to the service, you, I have obviously picked that I'm following Harbor Beach, so Harbor Beach stuff comes up on my, on my feed. So I can see, for example, in this feed, I can see the varsity, girls, girls varsity game against Memphis, when that is on live, if I click on this, I'm watching the live stream of the basketball game. Boys varsity against Memphis on the 23rd, I could pull that up at home live. And if I scroll down a little bit here, you'll see archive, just this, just a little while ago, we played against Deckerville. And so there's an archive, the archive of the past games. Then, just to give you an example of what it looks like, if it'll, if the bandwidth is good here, it should pull up. I'll fast-forward just a little bit and see if it'll connect. But you can see as it jumps forward, because it's tied into our scoreboard, it's, it brings over the, I think I'm cutting some of you off a little bit by the laptop top, I'm sorry about that. But it's bringing over Harbor Beach 8, 18, Deckerville 10, and the time of the game over into, and the camera doesn't have a person operating it, it's sensing motion, and it's zooming in, zooming out, and following, tracking based on where it senses the motion. Sometimes, usually, not, not often, but sometimes it'll mess up, okay? You could have the variety of motion down here, and maybe the inbound pass down here gets stolen, and because the camera's going where the most of the motion is, it misses the steal of the inbound pass. So it goes back and forth a little bit. But overall, it does a pretty good job, as you can see in this recording, of following and tracking, tracking what's going on. It's, it's pretty slick. Just for fun, and just for a, sort of a little bit, this is the catch, that wasn't a catch from Breckenridge, just in case you were wondering about that. Controversial play, I put it right to that, because the Breckenridge game was recorded with Pixelot. And it, also I had commentators, which is another thing we can do. We can overlay commentate, commentating, and we have the device to do it. So if we have students, or Aaron and I said we would, before basketball season is done, Aaron and I are going to do a commentating. We've already made an agreement with each other that we'll team up and we'll do one, just to show kids that it can be done.
We're going to show the kids it's so easy even we could.
Yeah, we, we were talking about, we were like, okay, if we, we could say it as the kids, if we could, you could do better than what we could do. So we, we're going to try one, because we have the device that will do it. But at any rate, here is that controversial play from Breckenridge, the sound's down.
I'm afraid to touch it, it'll mess up.
Next big play, first completion for Harbor Beach. Anderson back to pass again, looking down the field, he airs one, down the sideline, complete.
It wasn't complete.
What a catch over top of the defender, no?
It was complete, you mean. It was complete. In the record books, it was incomplete. But I'll stop it there. The point was to show you the Pixelot camera and the things that it can do, it's very unique technology. What happens next, I can't, I can't say. We, does athletics decide to, that they want to go forward and purchase something for football or soccer, do a mobile one and all of that stuff? I don't know. I know installing this and getting it up and running for basketball is a very unique experience. We already have, it's for the $10 a month or $30 a season, we have 30 subscribers already to, according to Mr. Fuller as of yesterday. And it has really just been word of mouth. I've, I've not tried to do anything to advertise it as of yet. We get a small portion of that, and I think it's a, I can't remember, it's a couple of dollars per prescription, a subscription probably. We can charge more than the minimum amount if we want to make more, but that really wasn't the point in getting this off the ground. I could, there, we could have conversation about, you know, does that mean you have less money at the gate and all that stuff? My initial reaction is, I think you'd get people who wouldn't come. And grandmas and grandpas and uncles and aunts who might be, who might say, for a season, I can watch my nephew play football, or if we do football, or, or my niece play basketball, and they could watch everything live, so. At any rate.
So if other schools got this, you could go to their camera too with this and do all this stuff? It's like you guys did here.
And you don't have to pay an extra subscription, because you've already got the connection.
Yeah, but it does become a cool.
Bad Ex came to look at our Pixelot the week before Christmas break for a potential purchase, but I don't know, did they do it?
Yeah, and I think they're charging more than us.
Are they? At some, at some point, people will start jumping on.
No, I, I think it's a good idea. I, I think you're going to get people that are out of town, and I think you're going to get people that don't go, you know, if you can, if you can go to another team's camera, that don't go to away games.
Yes.
They'd probably get lots of people to go, like that football game, though, you know what I mean, who's going to drive all the way up to make a watch it? Because some people can't drive, you know?
Could be, then have to be their camera, you know?
Yeah.
It's only if, if that school's upstream.
Yeah.
But Mr. Fuller and I toyed around with free events, too. We had an assembly one day, and we thought, let's just program it to start and do a free event, to see if it worked, and it did. So there could be things like assemblies and graduation that we just livestream for people who are out of state or, you know, can't make it for whatever reason.
Just record it, can it record too then?
Yeah.
So you can record your graduation day then, too?
Absolutely.
It has the ability, though, I have not done it. If you see down here, where you can make digital copies and export to DVD, too.
Really?
Which I haven't personally tried, so I don't know, it's clunky or quality, I don't know any of that, but I know it's, it's a possibility, so.
Will there be pay for license or something?
I don't know.
It's interesting.
But the extensions for graduation and different things are things that make it unique past, past just sports applications, so. Anyway, we're talking about for just a moment.
Is that something you could put, like, on the sports program, that this is available?
Yeah, absolutely, because we just basically put the website, put the subscription rates or...
Would you like to watch it, huh?
Yeah.
Or would Grandma like to watch it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, to get the word out.
To get the word out, you're exactly right. And there's ability to advertise across there, too, so we could sell advertising, maybe it's a part of a banner, too.
Any questions for Dr. Bishop?
Yeah, how's the boilers coming?
They're in and running. Yeah, so really good, very, very good. Rapsin, I think, did a very good job. And our Jeff Kowalski was key, because he saves us a lot of money through labor, through labor like that, where Rapsin would have been there longer, he saves us a ton.
School board recognition.
All right, I have a couple of things. Mrs. Hunter's going to help me, but I want to make sure that I, I share with you, if this will play, I'll share this with you first.
Yes.
This was made by a variety of, of different groups, but Erica Wilson, Erica Popper, Tell Reese, put this together. So I want to give her credit for the seaming of the pieces together. It's about a minute long, okay? Hopefully, sound works.
Could you pull your laptop back?
Yeah, I can.
Please and thank you.
Could you push it forward?
That's very far.
Thank you for taking our school and letting us play to learn. Thank you for our school. Thank you for first grade. You rock!
Thank you for working hard. Thank you for our school. Thank you for our school. Thank you for what you do for our school. Thanks from the third grade.
On behalf of the senior class, we would like to thank you for...
Media Center.
The pledge of oath, I'll be honest.
The new scoreboard for our baseball and softball fields.
Thank you for everything. How great is that?
Thank you, you rock! School board for having us and your education, you make this all possible!
That was cute.
It was. Um, and then, we have, of course, the hands, um, some of the displays behind me here, so before you leave, we could just take a second and look at some of those, okay, so that work that they put in, so they can feel a little bit recognized. I don't want to go, I'm kind of standing in the group. And then, I sent you a text, thanks for the responses, I have, uh, we have got, uh, sort of a trivia thing, it will be painless, okay? If you get the trivia question, uh, ask you the trivia question, you may win a prize, all right, from appreciation. Not a bad prize, either. All right, so, and you have a volunteer for the first ques, you're all gonna get a question, so it's just who goes first?
I'll go first.
You go first. How many children do our school board members have in total? The seven of you, how many children do you have if you total them up?
How long do I have?
Yeah.
One, two, three.
You can't overthink it.
Okay, um, sixteen.
I will give you a prize, it's eighteen.
Oh, wow!
So, all right, first prize.
Who had a kid that I didn't know about?
Maybe I'll have you pass them out, um, just so I don't have to jump back and forth.
Do we want them to wait?
They have to wait, though, they, yeah. Because all the prizes aren't the same, so, I'm not that clever. Um, all right, I need a volunteer for second question. All right, Ron.
We're gonna get questions.
You got, you got an easy one, I think. How many board members graduated from Harbor Beach High School?
Yeah, you can count, I couldn't.
Pretty easy.
Two, for sure.
Come on, count again, count again.
What do you think?
Two.
Close enough, three!
Paul, Ron, and I.
You, Ron, Paul.
Yeah.
All right, third volunteer.
I'll go.
All right, Gail, I heard you first. Um, how many total years of board experience are represented between, with all seven of you total?
You get a prize no matter what.
It's a tough, it's tough.
Uh, seventy-two.
Holy cow, that was close, seventy-one.
Wow, dang!
That was good.
That's close.
You told me you couldn't think too long.
Yep, all right.
That's true.
Does Nancy have more than half of those?
No, I do not.
I can tell you, the three highest are ten, ten, and thirty. Wow. Yep, the three highest are ten, and you guys know who you are.
And all these gray hairs.
Nancy got over thirty.
Nope, just thirty, thirty and a half.
I thought you were closing in forty.
Thirty and a half.
How old do you think?
You're seventy-two, if I rounded up.
I was just trying to make it feel better.
Yeah, I know he is.
Yep. Volunteer for the next one. All right, Al. How many graduated from Harbor Beach in nineteen hundred, one nine zero zero?
Fifty-two.
I'll give you a prize, where are you in close? Three.
I'm the school board, you're saying.
No.
Graduate class of nineteen hundred.
Deb has a copy, a document that has a copy, we have, we have found it in the archive when we were trying to figure out some trivia questions, she has a copy of the commencement program from nineteen hundred, with the three names.
Would that be in the red school? Would have been up on the corner? What building were they in?
Nineteen hundred, they wouldn't have been up there.
Nancy doesn't remember, she wasn't there.
Maybe you put a little arsenic in there?
The next, next question, any, any volunteers?
If I have to answer, well, Gary, can I have it?
Yes.
I'm getting a prize no matter what you answer, it's okay. I'll pick somebody, then. All right, Michael, I'm picking you. All right, you, Harbor Beach High School graduates, graduates the year after, nineteen hundred was three.
So nineteen oh one?
Yeah.
Seven.
Oh, very close, nine.
Triple.
Boom!
Yeah!
Up to nine. All right.
Where are they all meant to be?
I don't, I have to look at the program.
He knows the call, he's picked Frank, he knew where Ice that school was at.
Who do we have, Gary and Paul, maybe?
Actually, hundred years old, he's in.
One of the two of you, I'll give you the question first. In November of eighteen ninety-eight, the school board unanimously approved Robert Baldwin to be paid three dollars to do this for the year. In nineteen ninety...
Teacher.
Paid him three dollars to do this for the year.
No, probably would have been a board president.
Either one of you.
Board president.
You want it, Gary?
Yeah, I think board president.
No, but it's a almost equal thing, to clean outhouses for the district.
Three dollars.
She's the board president, pretty close.
It's always cleaning up the poop. Very similar nature, three dollars for the year.
He also had to sand all the... They got slivers.
I have no idea, I just know it's in the, it's in the ledger, she's got a copy of it. All right, Paul, that, leave yours. In eighteen eighty-three, a female teacher, that's what it says in the ledger, was paid how much per month to be a teacher?
That clean the house, got three bucks for the whole year.
But she's being...
Yeah. Nancy.
And this is, this is fifteen years earlier.
The whole year, I'm gonna say, twenty dollars.
Ooh, very close, fifteen dollars a month.
He said for the whole year.
But the year was defined, we saw it in there, six-month school year. Six-month school year. That's everyone, but I do have, I do, I had one bonus trivia question here for anyone, but not a bonus prize, because that's all the gifts.
Come on, now.
In nineteen twelve, I just like this one, in nineteen twelve, how many students were enrolled K-12? That year, we had a K-12 school. How many students?
Twenty-three.
You're in the right ballpark.
K-12.
K-12. That's very close.
What did he say?
Thirty-eight.
Forty-two.
Forty even, Warren, forty even. The reason I picked nineteen twelve is just because that one we could find in the record. No special reason other than, but, uh, a hundred and six years ago, forty kids, K-12. So that, that's it for your trivia questions, thank you for playing along. You may open your gifts.
One, two, mail, two mail. Thank you very much. Hey, Gary, you could have got three dollars for building the fence. And you wouldn't even, even needed a bucket.
Thanks, Nat. Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I realize that everybody would have to be there.
Citizens' comment. Being known, uh, election of officers for the two thousand nineteen calendar year.
Uh, it's a recommendation of superintendent that we hold a twenty nineteen calendar year election of officers at this time.
Anybody have any problems, leave it the same way as it is?
Do you want to make a motion?
If I have a problem, I'll make a motion, leave it the way it is.
A second.
It's been moved and supported to leave the officers the same as they were last year. Uh, is there any discussion?
Is there any platforms, plans, ideas for the coming years that anyone can share? You know, just people that want to be, continue to be officers, any, I mean, anything? Any, any reason to leave the way it is? I've been having...
That we need to take...
See, you answered my question with a question.
Yes, I did.
No, I do not, but I would like to get your guys' insights.
I, I guess I was comfortable with the way it was, I didn't think it was a problem.
I haven't said it's a problem, I'm just asking for your insights.
I didn't accuse you of a problem.
You stated you didn't think there was a problem.
Are there any further questions or discussion? Motion is to leave the officers the same as they were last year. Michael?
No.
Ron?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Action item, the consent agenda.
Uh, recommendation of superintendent that we approve our consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, new business, discussion of stipend for our pre-K eight principal.
Recommendation of superintendent that we discuss, uh, discuss the pre-K eight principal stipend, uh, you had a little note in your, um, board packet, the background there is, we don't have to take a vote tonight, I mean, you can elect to do whatever you want, you can elect to do a vote if you, if you chose to, but that's not why I brought it up tonight. Past history has been that we've had a K eight principal, obviously, a pre-K eight principal. Previous to that, when we had an administrator serving the role, they had a stipend for taking the position of K eight principal. I would rather have a K eight principal than be doing the additional role, I won't pay that, I, um, it's not been an easy, um, path. What I'm asking for is just, well, not any necessarily asking, I just want to give the opportunity for the board to comment before they, uh, and be able to do that in this kind of form, uh, that, that simple, I want you to be able to have a discussion about what to do with the stipend, and I feel like we should be transparent, and this is just an opportunity to do that. Uh, I'll leave it at that, Mr. Bullgreen and I, and the three secretaries, the, um, have been the ones that have been really, the ones that have taken on the additional responsibilities, so, I'll leave it at that, but I'll answer any questions you have.
Can you put together an idea, like tomorrow, for the last principal, what, uh, package altogether was, so that we can look at it at the meeting, decide?
Yeah. I could give you her base salary, you know, the, the typical base salary, insurance, retirement, blah, 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 that.
See what it would have, you know, comparatively cost us to have a principal, so we could...
It was eighty-five thousand, the base, wasn't it?
That's, that's salary, but, I mean, we're also looking at a benefit package, and, you know.
So is this going, is this going to lead to not replacing that person?
I think that, that's a really good question because of this. As a board, would be included in this, I think Mr. Bullgreen's input is very valuable, too, in this case. We have, we don't have to make the decision tonight, and it would, as a matter of fact, I don't want to make the decision tonight. But we will have some trade-offs that we'll have to discuss. And one of them is administrative, because if we decide to continue the format that we have now, I think Aaron and I will be okay. If it, but, it all comes down to like a balancing thing, if that buys, for example, an additional teacher and lowers the class size, or, um, keeps a person in a counseling role, or an interventionist in a role, or, uh, an aide in a room, or, or whatever, because at the end of the day, as long as we continue to do this role, the net is that we save money, right? The question is, is it, is that trade-off worth something else?
Well, we've, we've been there in the past, but when you take that role, you're also having less time if you're working the same number of days in the role you currently have, so we're settling for less in that role, to add additional, one additional money.
Before, it was one person, though.
Well, one person, but it's still gonna, it's still gonna, everybody, if we have five people, if we have three secretaries that are now going to be sacrificing time in what they're doing, and two additional administrators sacrificing time in what we're doing, so instead of, we're settling for less than what we currently have in every one of those, and still paying the same amount of money, but now we're going to add more for a little bit of extra that's gonna be done in the same timeline.
It, it...
Basically, it's okay the way I see it.
Just to kind of piggyback on that a little bit, I can't tell you it's been easy for us, that would be a lot. It's, it's been, under, uh, working harder than I've worked before, I, in longer hours here and there, last night I went to bed at eleven-thirty, and because of the weather, I got up at four-thirty in the morning this morning. To, to me, as we discuss it moving forward, it, it'll be a combination of what kind of candidates do we have and stuff like that, um, and then, is it, is it worth it for us to continue to move forward, and I know I'm being a little repetitive, because that, the extra dollars you save, is it worth it to buy something else, so to speak? And I, until Stacy and I build the budget for next year, I can't tell you exactly how that will look, and the revenue consensus things are not out with the new governor, they won't be out for at least another month before we have the projections of what next year they're gonna give us per pupil. We're still out a couple of months from having even a, you know, starting to put in some building blocks, but everything comes with trade-offs.
We currently have some staff that has their administrative certificates, is there any possibility that we'd have anybody looking to do something like that, move into that role on a part-time thing, or something that...
I've had some express interest, um, and a couple of that have expressed interest, I think are high-quality people, but right now, they're just kind of, they're dipping their toe in with, with some questions about what it might look like, nobody making a commitment. If any of the ones that have approached me expressed, you know, like, I really would like to do this, I think we should consider them through the regular interview process, you know, staff being involved, everybody do it the right way, but if any of the ones that have talked to me about it just a little bit, I think we have some promising people there.
So it doesn't sound like someone came forward, they really want you guys to get your, your feelings aren't gonna be hurt.
Not at all. Not, not in a, not a little, not even a little bit. If, if we decide together, you know what, I'll use a hypothetical, say next year, after we find out what we're gonna get per pupil and all that, and all the building blocks start being put together, and I am to present to the board, we're projecting a negative one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget, I'll just make it up, negative one-hundred-and-fifty. If Aaron and I continue to do this role, it'll be a negative a hundred instead of one-hundred-and-fifty. Or, that could be a combination that we talk about, or what if it is, we can project a zero, a zero budget, but if we can, uh, we can project out that we add fifty thousand dollars if we continue to do this, or instead of adding fifty thousand, I can make a kindergarten class size better. I mean, those are the things I can't quite, because there's so many variables yet, with how all that pans out. It's just too many variables right now for me to give you a straight answer.
How much time is this added to your day?
Per day, it really varies, but per week, fifteen, twenty hours, easy, because what I'm finding is that I'm not getting to, I'm having to prioritize differently, so I'm not getting to, for example, emails, I don't, during the day of you email me, I hardly ever get back to it. I'm doing those things at like eight-thirty at night, nine-thirty at...
Is that different prior, you know, I mean, has that changed, you know, because you're a principal now, you know, like, just, you know, for your example, emails...
I give you an example, you know, um, discipline, even though we're not swamped with discipline right now, discipline in following through with parent contacts and those sorts of things, they have to be done immediately, so those things are taking priority, they should, right? And that's pushing everything that I do that can, I'm having to prioritize like a mass unit a little bit, I don't want to exaggerate too much, but, so an email that can be responded to later, I might just look at the heading of email and say, okay, I'm gonna do this before I go to bed tonight, because it can wait. And I'm finding that, for me, those things are very frequent, maybe for you, too, that Saturday, I might be catching up on Thursday, Friday emails, I might spend all morning long on Saturday, like, three hours sometimes, just going through emails, just catching up. I would, I would wager I get forty emails a day. I would, I would wager I get forty emails a day. And that just, it's that much communication. Sometimes planning things, simple things like what would normally be able to be done during the day, like putting together a document like this. I find myself doing that late at night.
Ten-thirty at night, you're there, yeah.
So you're saying basically that at some point, there could be a burnout on this too?
I can't lie about that.
So at that point, we'd be getting nothing for anything additional. And we'd start, we'd be lagging. And the kids would be suffering.
It does get, it's tiring.
Yeah, oh, I don't doubt it.
Yeah. Could I, I mean, you know, I, I'm just trying to get information, asking this question. I mean, if you had to estimate prior to the change, about how many hours a week versus after the change? About, you know, how many hours a week you putting, you know, both putting in right now?
I, it's interesting to see that I started a document when I first took this on last year. And I, I averaged, it's, it's hard to give an exact amount because what I was keeping track of was, was how often I was here.
Right.
At school, and it was like, I averaged eleven hours a day.
Okay, prior.
So that doesn't count the stuff I do at home, which is extensive. That was last year.
Okay.
This year, it's, I haven't, I haven't looked at it recently, but it's, it's at least similar, but the amount of work you do at home has increased.
Okay.
I would echo the same thing. I haven't found that my number of minutes here, small thing, like some evening events and stuff, I was coming to anyway. So the amount of minutes here, it just, the, maybe this fits in a little bit with what Gary was saying too. It's just this, it doesn't end though. Before, it was a little bit easier to compartmentalize. Not perfect. I'm a superintendent. You, they have people calling out all kinds of night, and all kinds of weird stuff goes on. But it was slightly easier to compartmentalize, and now the compartment is just bigger.
Work life balance then.
Yes. Last, if this had been, if this had taken place last year, I wouldn't have been able to do that. This year, being my second year, basically, no other else, it's, it's doable. Last year wouldn't have been doable.
Okay, I know, Paul, I know you got, I got, you got one, but just, I mean, along the same lines, I mean, just, you know, we can, all of us can work to our maximum abilities for a certain amount of time. I mean, do you feel like, I mean, really that, I mean, all the important pieces are still getting as much attention as they need and deserve? And I mean, you know, now, I'm not talking about, you know, little emails, but, you know, I mean, do you guys as professionals feel like you are doing the best job that you can with, with it being split with responsibilities like that?
I think right, right now, I don't feel like I'm missing anything major. There are times when I, I have such a, this sounds like a, like I'm interviewing, you know, I mean it to sound that way. I have a higher bar for myself that I've always had my whole life I've had to wrestle with. So sometimes I go home and I, I'm like, I could've done this better, that better, but I did that ten years ago. So to answer your question, I feel like I'm getting all the major things done and I feel like I'm on top of things. I will never feel complete. It's, that's a personality.
That's a curse, yeah, yeah.
I have the same disease. If, if our staff wasn't so good, it would be impossible right from the beginning. If there, I don't think that we're dropping the ball on anything. But I think if we do ease up in, in any area, the staff is so good that it's not even noticed.
Okay, and so it sounds like, I mean, this is something that, from your guys' perspective, could be maintained for the mid to longer term.
I think it could be. Our staff, we, we were pretty honest when, and I believe Aaron would say the same thing. I have no problem with the staff said, we're feeling short-changed about, about being honest about it. When we talked to the staff early on, we did it at an open meeting, and most people trust us pretty good. I don't think we have rose-colored glasses on about that. I think most people do. We had open discussion about what this would mean and if, and try to tell people, we realize that we don't want to short-change anybody, but we're open to letting us know that you feel short-changed. It, at the meeting we had, it was overwhelming at our K-12, pre-K-12 meeting, that they didn't feel short-changed. I mean, it was, you name a person. You know, there were probably seven people that spoke, who had, you know, spoke in front of the group. We were right here in this room, and they said, we feel like you're doing a good job. This is, we want, we don't want to settle for a principal just to hire a principal. We would rather have you guys continue. And I, and not to make you feel odd, but there were a lot of compliments about Mr. Bullgreen in particular. I was very pleased. I think we make a good team that way. I do too, and some of them expressed to me at, well, at the meeting and even later, they said that they would rather have the two of us part-time than, than an average person. That seems very self-serving. I'm, I'm just related.
If we were to get an above-average person that fit in for the same thing that you people have, we'd be able to step even higher.
Sure.
So that, I, I guess my goal would be to strive for the highest level we could for the kids and to get to do the very best we could. And I, you know, short-term is fine, but I'm thinking that there are some really good people out there. You know, you got a real good fit when you hired Mr. Bullgreen, and we did real well when we hired you. And if we could do one more like that, we'd be moving that much higher than what we are.
Are you gonna post this again then, like in the springtime?
I believe so. We'll go in May-ish, maybe early May, posted. And it, I don't see any harm in posting the position, interviewing and seeing what candidates are out there. There, you can post a position and decide not to hire. You know, but you, you don't even have a choice if you don't post it. You just try to go fishing a little bit.
I have just a couple of things, I guess. I would like to see us try to fill the position because what I'm hearing is that you guys kind of feel like you're at capacity. Life happens. What happens if somebody in your family gets sick? Or something unexpected happens, you know, family crisis, whatever. That then not only affects you, but it goes everywhere. So I do want to see us try to get somebody fill that position, not because you're not doing a good job, but just because of the realities of life. Nobody ever knows what's coming down the pike. And like I said, God forbid something happened health-wise or whatever. You can't. It's not that you don't want to, but you're not going to be able to stay at the level that you're at now. So that was my thought on that, and I guess my other question on the stipend or whatever. So if we, okay, a stipend for this year, we're going retroactively back to the beginning of the year? Is that what we're thinking?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, so then if we fill that position, then any of that, those dollars then, the people will go back to where they were before the next year? We're not going to keep like secretary increases and things if that position gets filled?
Catch it first, but, yes.
Okay.
I'm willing to do this, you know, as long as the end result is we get a good quality candidate in that position. I, I don't see this being a never anything. I want to have a K eight principal. But I, but I'm willing to let this be the status quo in, in hopes of getting somebody quality. We're not just jumping at the first, you know.
I think everyone's a quality candidate.
You got a brother?
I have an identical twin, and a lot of the staff have said to me, get him to move out here. He's got a house in the lake. I said, there's a lake right here? He's a student's teacher. He does have an admin degree. But he's not, just move it. He's, he's about three and a half hours away.
I, I've heard great feedback of what you guys have been doing. I think at one point, they said that even like the K through six, and then you were doing seventh and eighth with your group, and you were doing through six.
You know, because we've tried not to define it as, like, okay, sixth grade, I walk by and sixth grader needs help.
I'm gathering that they really kind of liked that arrangement. Because the, the sixth or seventh, eighth grade kind of feels more in the high school. Because they're switching teachers and whatnot, and they didn't really feel right when they were with the K six or K five.
Curriculum-wise, logistics-wise, they have a lot more in common.
Yeah, and it was working out very well, so you guys kind of rolled with it and did some things that we weren't really doing before that have, you know, made it more efficient. I, I personally would like to see a, a principal. I mean, I, I don't want to remove that position. So if the goal is to post it and get somebody quality, then I'm, you know, I'm okay with doing this right now. But I, my, my personal feeling is I'd like to fill that position.
For the short term, yes. I agree that we should go with, with Dr. Bishop and Mr. Bullgreen. It's getting us out of the pinch right now. They're doing the work. I honestly believe anybody that does the work should be paid for it. So the stipend part, I have no trouble, you know, paying you comparable to what we did with Larry. In the springtime, get the new position po, or get the position posted. Cast a net, see what we can find. If we can find something that is a good fit for this school and for the district, I say we go for it. And then return you back to your normal lives, and we move on.
We appreciate what you've been doing. We've basically been a good for free. I mean, since you, since the beginning of the year, so. It should be addressed, but let's, let's hope in the future we can find someone.
Anybody have any further discussion on this?
Uh, just real quick, you know, I mean, just, you know, what ifs? We don't find somebody. We don't, you know, come spring, we don't find anybody. I mean, I guess it'd just be, can I stay as cool as how it is now then?
I think so.
Well, I think we have a discussion at that time, and we decide what we're gonna do.
You, and I think we also, we look at the candidate pool may help us drive the position. Mr. Bullgreen and I have talked about different combinations. If we have someone who is, looks like they're gonna be outstanding at elementary only, maybe like a pre-K six or something like that, but maybe not tie into seventh and eighth, because they have no experience or the, I think we'd be willing to think outside the box a little bit about what the position would look like. And so I, I wouldn't, even though I think it's appropriate for us to post it as of what we, what we're used to, if candidates come back and it looks like the division is not exactly at eighth grade, I'd be open to that. I'd be open to looking at different formats.
I'd like to focus on in-house people that we have here that we know. You know, then they know what they're getting into. And, you know, if it's somebody that can get along well with the staff, I don't want to hire somebody that's gonna cause you two more problems, you know, and, and the staff. So if we can get a quality candidate and, and better yet, hire them in-house, and, and they can work well with what we've got here. That would be ideal.
Any further questions or comments? What three secretarial positions would be including races?
Probably look at K eight, my office and the high school. Because those are the three that are impacted by the, you know, they don't have a, they've all been impacted by this, those three. Mrs. Seaman, Mrs. Hunter, Mrs. Taylor.
Other? Does anybody have anything other?
I guess I just have one question. Stephanie Shalkey is doing her own thing now, correct? So do we have anybody at the fitness center? So is it still open?
Yes, it is. With, obviously, supervisory supervisors and coaches or sort of thing. Assistant coaches, public is still in there, up till seven o'clock, we have custodial there, the front door open. Or, which is, we have custodial staff here open for that. Well, they're here past now, but they need to have a time when they can shut the door and get it cleaned and all this stuff. No big long-term solution there.
Tell Mrs. Parr, Mrs. Wilson, and whoever else involved, but thank you for the posters and stuff like that.
Oh, I will. Yeah, thank you.
Great presentation.
Is the video on the website?
No. I can, yes, that's a good idea, especially if Mrs. Hunter wanted to make that. This is cute. This is very, very well done, and I'm glad that, I mean, she put it together. I can't take credit for it. She did a good job.
Anybody have anything other? If there's no objections, meeting adjourned.